Good evening and welcome to the June 28, 2017, meeting of the NIC Board of Trustees. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a quorum. Unfortunately trustee Wood was not able to be with us tonight. And we don't have any other, you're all guests here tonight, so, but there's nobody in particular we have to introduce. So let's move on to review of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any comments, additions, or modifications? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. Nobody has signed up for public comment, so we'll move right on to celebrating success. Development Department Grants and Alumni Association, Rayelle Anderson. Rayelle?
And then I amend the agenda later.
Rayelle, before you get started, there is one procedural thing we need to do. We have an item come up that needs to be added to the agenda, so I'm going to ask Judy to make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we amend tonight's agenda to include the topic of renaming of the college bookstore.
I'd second that.
And since it's a, since it's a last-minute amendment to the agenda, we're also required to give a reason why it wasn't put on earlier. And we were just made aware of the fact today, actually, that there is, the contractor is in the process of doing signs and making modifications to rename a portion of the Student Activity Center here, Student Union. And so the board has not had an opportunity to review it until today and so, and not able to put it on the agenda until this opportunity. So that's the reasons we're doing it. Will, all in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor. No opposed. So the agenda is amended to include that item, and we'll cover that later on in the meeting. So, Rayelle, thank you for, let me do that.
Chairman Howard, trustees, President McLennan, Mark Lyons, colleagues and guests. It's my privilege to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the NIC Development Department. We have the privilege to walk alongside the NIC employees and students and community to seek and facilitate resources to help North Idaho College advance its mission in changing people's lives. So it's tonight we get the privilege to recap and share some great outcomes with you. The NIC Development Department is a comprehensive fundraising model consisting of grants, alumni relations, and the NIC Foundation. As a sub-entity of the Alumni Relations efforts, we also have an NIC Alumni Association founded in 1997, which is not always common in community colleges, but it works really well for North Idaho College. We're going to reboot that up.
Ken, Ken.
Our sir.
Uh huh. That's an air conditioning. Great. Technology. Isn't that great?
Watching Andy back there.
I could tell all kinds of stories, but I'm practicing being quiet, which is new for me.
Now we're all going to see how that goes.
Yeah, it's a real test. He says with a smile. Here's a real test. Very good. Thank you for your patience. The NIC Development Department, per NIC college policies 7.03 and 7.0301, we coordinate fundraising and grant-seeking efforts on behalf of North Idaho College. We collaborate with NIC leadership, departments, divisions, employees, and students to assess funding needs and funding gaps here at the college. We foster relationships with friends, donors, alumni, industry, and grant funding sources. We secure support for North Idaho College. We steward resources, secured on behalf of NIC and on behalf of the NIC Foundation prudently and effectively. We facilitate the collaboration between North Idaho College, the NIC Foundation, and the NIC Alumni Association. Our organizational structure, as you can see, we are a team of nine that reports up through the North Idaho College President, Rick McLennan, who then obviously reports to all of you. Back in 1977, North Idaho College trustees and president started the North Idaho College Foundation, which is a private corporation, a 501(c)(3) charitable corporation that exists to secure external resources, external resources to benefit North Idaho College. You'll see the dotted relationship with North Idaho College. We serve, our department serves as the key location for the NIC Foundation. The Foundation Board by bylaw has, the college president serves as secretary, and by bylaw there's one trustee liaison on that 30-member board of directors. In addition, the NIC Alumni Association Board is closely related and partially funded in part by the college, as well as the NIC Foundation. The whole operation of Development Department has nine staff. We have one vacancy right now. And the funding for the staff in that department are a joint venture between NIC and NIC Foundation. Tonight we're here to celebrate, and I thank you for the opportunity. We have remarkable people that work at North Idaho College. We have remarkable volunteers, donors, in community. But it takes special employees to bring all of that together beautifully. So tonight, I get to say, meet our team. As I mentioned, we have, we're a team of nine staff members. We had a staff member depart in January, which created some opportunities for position openings and whatnot. So currently, our team of eight is seeking an administrative assistant that will fill that ninth position. But it's my privilege to ask, we have a team of eight, two of them are not here tonight, but if my colleagues could stand up, please, Sarah, Darcy, Kristen, Melanie, Pam, and Olive, and Osa, three of them are not here this evening, but I just want to recognize them and thank them for the remarkable work that they do on behalf of NIC. So really why we're here is to celebrate success, and through the work that we do alongside each of you, and students, and community members, and donors, and industry, we want to share some results with you. The contributions actually received through the NIC Development Department, whether it's through the NIC Foundation, grants that go directly to NIC as the fiscal agent, we have some great numbers to share with you, but we secure resources for student scholarships, programs, services, and capital needs of the college, as you know. The current fiscal year that we're in, over 3.7 million has been secured in, since 2012, 29 million, over 29 million has been secured through the department, but working in collaboration with NIC employees, and students, and volunteers to secure funding. I want to point out that of that 29 million in the last, since '12, 14.9 million has been secured through grant funding. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce NIC's Grants Manager, Sarah Fladland, who started in the Grants Management role in 2011. And she's going to share some highlights of the grants in the recent years with you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Greetings. Thank you. So I have been in the role for just about six years now, working very closely with all of my colleagues, and we, I thought we would choose just a couple of highlights per year of some of the grants that have been secured in the last six years. Let's see if I can forward this. All right. So starting back in fiscal year 2012, we received our first U.S. Department of Labor, what we know as TACT grant, but that's under the Agency of Employment and Training Administration, for $449,446. This was a consortia effort between some of the other southern colleges, and so we received that amount to support our physical therapist assistant program and our Adult Education Center Summer Bridge Math Program, or Boot Camp, sorry. In fiscal year 13, we received another U.S. Department of Labor ETA grant totaling $2,976,663 for Aerospace and Advanced Manufacturing Program. And so this grant is now complete, and it has been picked up permanently by the Idaho State Career Technical Education, Division of Career and Technical Education Divisions. We're very excited about that. Fiscal year 14, we were able to secure an Albertson's Foundation Grant. This was, two grants we actually received for them. They funded the project for four years in total. It was for $538,000, and it supported our village project. It was originally known as I-Best, but then morphed into the Village Project. And then this was also the year that we secured our Idaho Department of Labor Grant in the amount of $281,000 to start our, or establish our NIC Workforce Training Center, Wood Products Center of Excellence. And they are now on their round two of grant funding secured. So that is going very well. And then this past year, FY15, we had our, or two years ago, we had our largest grant secured to date in the history of North Idaho College, and that was to fund our Idaho Center of Excellence Healthcare Partnership. It was another U.S. DOL grant, and it was in the amount of 6.4 million. And I believe that they were the celebrating success a couple of months ago, so you've heard about all of the good work that has resulted from this particular grant. FY16, we took over another grant. This is a state-directed grant from federal dollars. It's the Idaho Mind Safety Training Program that's administered through the Workforce Training Center. It's again, U.S. Department of Labor through MSHA, which is the Mind Safety Health Administration Grant. We are now the state designee to offer all Idaho mind safety training, and that happens over there on Marie's shop. So this is a continuing one. If there's funding, we'll continue to receive that on an annual basis. We apply for it on an annual basis. And then most recently, as you know, we received a U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration Grant in the amount of about $1.37 million. This is one-to-one matching grant, and it funded equipment and technology at our Parker Technical Education Center. So right now, we have another one that's pending. I don't know if you've received word about the NSA designation, the cybersecurity designation that our site program has received, but in just a couple of days, we should find out if we received an NSA grant in the amount of $253,000, which if funded, will help expand that program to add the cybersecurity track.
Is that the photo that was, we just saw?
Yes, was, and I believe.
Reading Alabama smiling, that's all part of that. Cassie spoke to that today, yes.
Yes. I think that's how I have right now. Do you want, I'm going to turn it back over to Rayelle, and we'll answer questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Grants, grants at North Idaho College, we're a community college, so we don't just seek grants because we feel like it. There's usually a need. We, our department tries to listen for needs at the college that the college budget can't fund, or if a grant could help fund it, and the college can direct resources somewhere else, that external resources, those resources help you stretch dollars further. For students, scholarships, of course, those are opportunities that simply just wouldn't be available for students. So that's, we work hand in glove. So grants range, those are the large ones that you see. There are grants ranging from $250 that work with different program areas and whatnot. So we have the privilege of working with all kinds of departments and divisions and employees, student groups, each year, and we love it. So some highlights, these are audited dollars and figures. 15, 16 fiscal year, 871 students were awarded scholarships. $903,000 in scholarships were distributed out through NIC from external resources. $953,584 went out in program support and service areas from those external resources that were secured through the Development Department efforts in collaboration with NIC employees and students. In the Development Department, we manage 334 funds through the NIC Foundation's fiscal opportunity, 288 of which are scholarship funds, 34 are program funds that provide support for programs ranging from health professions and nursing, to trades in industry, to the library. And then we have 12 greatest needs funds that we manage. Some recent successes we had to throw in, this current year, we had over 200 volunteers that worked on either on the boards, on the campaign cabinet, and all points in between. That's a, we don't, we generally work with 140 volunteers a year, which doesn't include NIC advisory groups. It just includes the volunteers that we interact with and support. The Alumni Association, there's a direct correlation to Alumni Association membership and support of North Idaho College. So we proudly have 300, 3,357 members. We have about a database of about 17,000 that we communicate with actively. We had nearly 600 donors. The fiscal year's not done yet. We still have a couple of days, so the numbers might change. Really proud. In the last decade, NIC has embraced the Employee Giving Campaign, and we had 74 percent participation in this year's Employee Giving Campaign. That is, that speaks volumes. NIC employees give first. We go out to the community and seek support, and just so proud of the employees for the investment they make, not only of their time, talent, but they give of their resources generously. So pleased to say that we have 5,500 raffle tickets sold as of yesterday, June 27th at 11:15 a.m. And so for the 24th year in a row, the really big raffle has sold out. But what that program does is really provides a learning lab for the carpentry management and construction program here at North Idaho College. It's a wonderful opportunity. The drawing will be July 12th for that, that's the largest annual public fundraiser that our department, through the NIC Foundation, does. And then, of course, a recent success that we've all been a part of is the Building the Future Campaign, where over 5 million has been secured to date, and we're still, we're still working on that. We just want to thank you for the opportunity to share, and to thank you for letting us be a part of helping to change lives, one student at a time. And so with that, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Rayelle. Any questions from the board or comments?
All right, Andy, can you hear me? Well, a couple things. One, I thought you guys did a great job Monday at the reception at the really big raffle house.
Thank you.
Very well attended and very well received, nice crowd there. I also saw, one of the things that you guys were, well, first, did see the picture of getting the award in Alabama, so well done with the cybersecurity, and I do understand there's more of that coming. Third thing, saw that you guys had contributed some funds to an effort to replace the barbecues on the beach.
Yes.
I did have a question with that, and it may not have been feasible, but I got to thinking with Tim Strong and the great work those guys do, I've actually hired Tim privately to do some work for me, including helping with a fire pit, so. Did we need to buy those barbecues, or were we able to get our folks to build those?
Happy to answer the question for you, Todd, trustee Banducci.
Boys.
Trustee Banducci. NIC Foundation, for the last 24 years, has provided a foundation grant program to North Idaho College employees and student groups to apply to. This current fiscal year, NIC Foundation made available $55,000, again, for the NIC community to apply to. One of the applications was for replacement of all those barbecues along the NIC beach, which NIC owns and makes available to the community. And the Facilities Group and Custodial Facilities and Grounds did reach out to our programs. They didn't have the capacity to produce all of those.
I was wondering, timing.
So they went ahead and procured those, and then that will just enhance the opportunity that you all make available to the community to come down and barbecue on NIC beachfront.
It's still a great project, and so I don't want to throw any water on it, I just was curious.
Sure.
I would think, I would have taken a lot of coordination and lead time, and I didn't know if that was even a possibility, but.
I do believe the grant applicant that submitted, she reached out, and the department reached out and explored, but great idea. Hopefully they'll last a really long time, but if not, we have more capacity with our new facility. Might be possible in the future.
Well, well done, though. Well done.
Any other comments?
Rayelle, I'd just like to offer my congratulations to you, and I know it takes teamwork.
Yes.
I know that grant writing is not an easy task. It's very impressive, and it's not just this year, is it? It's sustained over many years, so congratulations. Very well done.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I do want to add one thing. We all know that when a group of employees are capable and competent and dedicated and hardworking, great things happen. But when they all work on a team together, magic happens. And the team that I get to be a part of is remarkable, and so, thank you.
Rick?
Thank you. And just to add to your comments, trustee Murray, and I don't have a metric on this, but there are metrics out there, and if we were to stack up the NIC Foundation and the Development Group against other like-sized community colleges, I would not be at all surprised if we weren't at the very top in terms of, I mean, the foundation's at $26 million now, the amount of scholarships that are awarded, and that's pretty visible. But when you look at the grants piece of that, especially, and I know you know this, that things have changed at the federal level in particular, in terms of what is, what's out there to be had, and the fact that we, these are big numbers. And to be able to be that competitive in this environment and not having to stop there, I gave an example earlier this week of, you know, the, the Wood Products Centers of Excellence Grant Phase One and Phase Two that we got. We got Phase One, and that was a lot of hard work and collaboration, and it's bringing the whole wood products industry together to look at workforce development. But there are other regions of the state that are fiercely competing for that money. And then Phase Two came around, and we got Phase Two funding in front of other regions of the state that were in line the first time. And so, you know, good for us. It means, it's a very good example of the collaborative spirit in North Idaho and at North Idaho College, but it's also just a testament to a group of people and some individuals that are just hitting on all cylinders when it comes to this work. We are best in class.
It also takes the pulse of the community and the pulse of the community within NIC, knowing what the needs are and going after specific needs that help our economy locally.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to build on that, and Rick, you have experience at some prior colleges, and so, from what you've said, our foundation's pretty amazing, from what you've experienced in the past, and I'd like to sing the praises on one more thing real quick, if I can. It's passed by a little bit now with time, but I was privileged to be at the Scholarship Celebration again this year. My wife and I were able to attend again, and it's really something when you hear the stories of lives changed, and how maybe it's 250, maybe it's 1,000, maybe it's 2,000, you know, but whatever the level, for so many of those individuals, I was going to say kids, but, I guess they're still kids to us, old guys, but it's what's making the difference. It's that little bit that's just helping them get over the hump, allows them to make the choice to be in school. So that's a, I guess I throw that out there to encourage anybody who has the opportunity to attend that next spring, do it. It's a very worthy endeavor to be there and just hear it, listen and watch. It's very happy.
Trustee Banducci, Chairman Howard, thank you for bringing it back to the student. So all these external resources and the gifts that donors give are to make sure that our students have excellence, of course, and our employees have that extra margin of support. But the more external resources we can secure, we can keep the cost affordable and the experience exceptional for our students, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Rayelle, let me end this by saying thank you very much to you and your team, not just for what you do, but as you described it, for bringing the magic before us so that we could, we could see it. So many times, efforts like yours go unnoticed. The work is there, and the progress is there, but you don't get them, you don't get your work noticed, and thank you for bringing, bringing that to us today.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item then is the President's Report.
Thank you. In a little bit, you're going to hear from Sarah Garcia on where we have come to with our development of the planning activity and process that's going to take us through the next several months, and I won't, I won't steal any of Sarah's thunder and that, you'll have plenty of opportunity to hear about that. Thank you all for, those of you who were able to participate earlier this month in the State Board of Education presence on our, on our campus. You know, we held a joint JFAC State Board meeting, and I think it was very successful. We had an opportunity to highlight a number again of our collaborative efforts and things that are unique about North Idaho College in a way that we're meeting the needs of the communities that we serve. We had intended to take, typically those meetings begin with, a lot of times, a tour of the campus, and we had intended to do that. We don't have it for you tonight, but maybe we'll have it for a future meeting. We want to take them on a tour of the new facility in Rathrum, the Parker Technical Education Center, and it didn't work logistically, so we got a drone with a camera and flew over it, and flew over K-Tech, and it really, it was such a great, have you seen this? I don't know if you got it.
Yeah, I've seen it.
You've seen the video, all of you?
I've seen it.
Did it go out? Okay. It was really nice to be able to bring the tour to them and, and talk about the collaborative relationships that we've created through that and the way we're meeting workforce development. The month of June had me traveling quite a bit, and I'll go first to trustee Banducci's reference to the photo. Had the opportunity to join two of our faculty chairs, Sue Chibley and faculty Kathleen Zerda Page, to Huntsville, to receive a very highly selective designation of a National Center for Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense for two-year institutions. And I just want to just read you something. Fred Klappenberger, who I knew from my time in Maryland, was a mentor to our team developing this application, and it's a very rigorous activity. It took, well, here, I'll read this to you. Fred is quoted, and you may have seen this in the paper, said, "The designation is a new opportunity for community colleges and most educational institutions, and most educational institutions do not make the cut. To put this in perspective, there are less than 1% of the community colleges in the United States that meet these criteria." 1%. What really impressed me about the NIC Computer Information Technology Program was the cyber defense embedded curriculum in the Associate of Applied Science degree that will provide students the knowledge and skills to enter the cybersecurity workforce and/or pursue a bachelor's degree in IT and/or cybersecurity. And, you know, 1% is a pretty, pretty rare fight, and, and what this has done is it's given us the capacity now, and one that you heard about, is to apply for some grants that were out of reach for us before, and we're very hopeful for those. So it was just a real joy to be able to join them and receive that designation. Attended the Governor's Task Force on Higher Education on June 9th. All four of the committees presented draft, and trustee Meyer, I did see you in the audience there for a good bit of that. They got kind of a preview of what's going to come out of the four subgroups. Meet again in August, August 5th, to do a dry run of actually putting these proposals into their final form. And I think probably the biggest message, I guess, for you, the committee of the task force ended with a lot of conversation, questioning about how do we, how do we get down to the three, the two, the three, the four, because there's still a lot of different initiatives, and some are maybe not, you know, the big push for the task force, but what is the big push for the task force? And there are some themes emerging out of that. One, of course, is going to be funding, and, you know, no surprise, we've talked about this before, but definitely moving in the direction of outcomes-based funding, but, you know, more to follow on that. The Task Force on Workforce Development completed its work on Monday, and you're going to see those recommendations come out. Marie Price represented North Idaho and North Idaho College, and was the only, I believe the only community college representative on the task force, is primarily business and industry, and then some other, I think, two other higher education entities, but North Idaho College was the only community college, and she had a very significant influence on the work of that committee. And out of that is going to come strong support, in a way of financial support, for the state's six workforce development centers. And also, music to our ears in this regard is emphasis on. on statewide strategic planning for workforce development. So, we're pleased to see that, and soon as those come, come out, we'll, we'll make sure you get a copy of them. Let's see. Took a couple of road trips, one just a few days ago to St. Mary's to visit Potlatch and the St. Mary's School District folks, in fact, their new superintendent introduced, and discussing the Idaho Department of Labor grant, again, around the wood products industry, and looking at the success of that work, both Phase One and Phase Two, and starting this discussion about how we can work on, build on those collaborations to support their workforce needs. Took a tour of the facility toward the plywood section. If you haven't had a chance to go through a, a process like that, and all the tours I've gone through, business and industry, these are some of the most interesting to go through, because what they do with a tree in a relatively short period of time is pretty amazing. Also had the opportunity to go, take a trip up to Sandpoint. We were hosted by Barney Ballard, and, Rayo, is it the Aviation Club?
There's an aviation club.
No, no, I just, what he's, the, the group of high school students who are even younger that he's working with. And what, what a project, you know, they, and you, again, you may know about this, I didn't. They've taken, they have an airplane that they've put together, they've machined and mechanicked and done everything that they need to do. They're waiting for FAA, they have FAA approval to taxi on the runway now, and pretty soon they're gonna have FAA approval to fly. And, and that's important to us for this next item, because we're really trying to look at how to inspire, especially in younger people, but not just younger people, the idea of innovation and, and thinking outside of the box of creative, creatively, and the, the idea of makerspaces, and, and that's a maker space around aerospace in Sandpoint that's had a dramatic impact on, on a lot of lives. Related to that, we've been in conversations with Gizmo again, and I sent a note out to the board earlier this month to let you know that we are again working with them to, and it looks like this is, we're gonna be successful in this regard, to have them have a presence on campus in the Headland Building. Have not signed an agreement on that yet, we're still working out a few things, but I'm very optimistic and positive about where that's going to be going. And then finally, some of you may know this, I'm not sure if you all do, but Patty Shea, the Regional Business Specialist with the Vista, who I know many of you know, she was on the board or on the committee that selected your new college president. She's also the Chair of the Court Delane Area Economic Development Corporation, formerly Jobs Plus. She's begun a year-long volunteer position with us. Patty will be spending about 25% of her time supporting North Idaho College staff in developing a strategic plan for expansion and growth of customized workforce training. She's going to be assisting staff in continuing to enhance and build partnerships with local businesses and industry, and to increase utilization of our workforce centers programs and aid in developing protocols, processes, guidelines, and policy for the use of NIC facilities around workforce training, workforce development. During this time, Patty will remain an Vista employee and be paid through them, and near the end of the year, we're gonna reevaluate this and revise the plan as needed. But what a wonderful opportunity to take somebody with her level of skill and ability, and, and already in the interest of serving business and industry, and, and have her come to us in this volunteer capacity to help us build out something we're trying to build out in a very meaningful way. So, that's, that's all. I was gonna do a little update on the Idaho Community College Council, but I'm gonna defer that to Chair Howard's report. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Our next agenda item is the K-Tech report. Todd Banducci.
All right. A few things that I'll mention. One, I do wanna do a shout-out to Cassie. She did a great job giving a presentation and update, and reminded everybody of how closely we're working with those folks at K-Tech and the interaction that we have on a daily basis, as Colby's talking about, talking with Doug, and, and the new collision repair course that they're working on, and just all the different things. It's a very exciting time, which, which led into a couple of things that Colby wanted to share. Their enrollment is way up, they're over, well, over 400 and, and 411, is that what he said today? 411, thank you. But, and that could grow more, but that's a all-time high, if I understood that correctly. So, I guess we built it, and they're coming. So, that's pretty exciting stuff. They also, we had a local businessman entrepreneur who volunteered and has been selected to join the board. There was a vacancy due to a resignation, so Tom Powers has, was approved on the board at K-Tech today. So, he's a welcome addition, brings a wealth of experience and knowledge, and so, very exciting to have him be joining us. One of the things that Colby shared that they're pretty excited about, they've had a thing called a positive, a positive placement. And basically, their metric is that when a student graduates, they consider it a success, a positive placement, if that student either goes on to further their education, has a job waiting for them, so gainfully employed, or goes into the military. And they've been able to track through the person there that does that, that right now, they can account for that 95 of the 96 graduates have been positively placed. 99%. That's, they set the bar pretty high, they can't get much better. And so, I know they're really excited about that, but that just speaks to the success that the three school districts are having in that collaborative effort and what they're doing out there. So, that's 95, you know, productive young people going on in a very positive, meaningful way. The last thing I'll mention is, one of the things that they've got going on out there that's been kind of interesting, they've got a program that's going on right now that's funded at the federal level, where they had like 700 applicants, and they chose 20, and they're being taught to work on heavy equipment. And the criteria was that they had to either be veterans or tribal, or it could be a tribal veteran, of course, and it's a 20-day program, I believe, and they're hosting it, and it, they basically pay everything, and then they get reimbursed by the feds. But it's a nice little moneymaker, and they've got a lot of those little programs like that. So, the K-Tech's being recognized locally, regionally, and really even nationally, which is pretty impressive for the little town of Rathrum and what's going on there. But, and they've got a couple more things coming on, so I was, I thought it was interesting, the different programs they've got going and that are producing income, you know, positive. And then, they also were talking today about putting together their program, the after-hours program that they have, that's for adults that are, have hey, they're been in prison, jail, maybe substance abuse, high at-risk people, or some combination of all the above, and they've had a tremendous success rate with that. That's another program that's got some federal money in there. Department of Labor, I believe, contributes to that, but I also know there's some private funding and some others. Maybe you can help me, Cassie, I think you listed three different kind of funding sources, but another exciting program that's going on at K-Tech, and they're getting ready to spin that up again, and they've had, I think they said they've had five welding classes that they've completed, this'll be their sixth, and they've had one construction class, I think. Yep. So, anyway, just some exciting things going on at K-Tech, and it's just bubbling over into our facility, and those are the kids that we're getting, and it's a very exciting time out there on the prairie. So, I think that's all I need to say.
Thank you very much, Todd. We have no, excuse me, old business, so we'll move on to the new business. The first tab is the renewal of the President's contract. Mark.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, historically, the Board of Trustees reviews the President's contract every year. President McLennan's contract is a three-year contract, but it's reviewed annually for renewal. The proposed annual renewal is for fiscal years from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020. And the proposed change reflects just the 3% salary adjustment for, that we've, that the board's given for all eligible full-time employees. The only other change was to take out the one-time moving reimbursement. So, other than that, the contract is the same, other than the, the salary adjustment, the contract is the same. So, at this time, the board has requested to consider a motion approving the new proposed contract and authorizing the board chair to execute the contract on behalf of the board and the college.
So, do I have a motion? Judy?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to do this, since I was the one that had a chance to see the visit on site before we hired Dr. McLennan, and the first year's just been great. So, I move that the board approve the proposed contract and authorizing the board chair to execute the contract on behalf of the Board of Trustees in North Idaho College.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, two seconds, that's good.
Two seconds.
Yeah.
Hardly.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor. Any nays? No? Unanimous. You don't get to vote.
I just appreciate the two seconds.
All right, our next business is Tab Two, which is the first reading of the revised acceptable use policy. Ken Wodenski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, member trustees, President McLennan, Attorney Lyons, colleagues and guests. I'm very thankful and humbled to be able to present this policy tonight. This has been about two years of my experience here at NIC getting these through. And I just want to really thank my colleagues, both in the IT Policy and Planning Council and the Senate, and then the Joint Subcommittee that we actually did to really work in a really true collaborative spirit, kind of language for this, and an additional seven policies that you'll hopefully be seeing in November to shore up our policies. The 3.08, 0.01 is a total revision of the language in the document. However, most of the language is still within the spirit of the acceptable use policy. Our goal was to shorten the language and make it really understandable for students who may not have a high technical background, but still have the power of a policy for the acceptable use in general accordance with just general use and state and federal laws.
As I understand it, the first paragraph of the red line is inadvertently left in and should be removed from our, our copy here, is that right? The first three lines, their use of information?
Yes, Chairman Howard, if you look at the strikeout language for the original policy, the first paragraph under the line item seven, starting with use of information technology not in accordance, was part of the first policy, so that would be stricken. And the, the new policy language starts with the North Idaho College, information technology resources must be used appropriately.
So, when we see the, the second reading, it will be less those first three sentences?
That is correct. I just noticed it today, and with Shannon on vacation, it just got back and forth, so.
Any questions or comments on the first reading of this policy? Judy?
Just a question, logistics, as we hear more about cyber attacks and hacking, how is NIC doing it, keeping that from happening here?
We are currently shoring up all of our security. That starts with policy. One of the policies that you'll also see is a security awareness training policy coming along, to have a policy to train our employees mandatory. The, the state of Idaho is working on several different initiatives, and I had a nice meeting with all of the CIOs in the state, including our partners at U of I and LCSC, and we are actually working together to take the National Institute of Standards and Technology framework and shore up a higher education version of matching those, so that we're all doing the same thing, and we're all kind of fighting the fight together. So, I think that'll be a truly collaborative effort, and then internally, we're just reviewing our processes to make sure that happens.
Watch as you can. It's all up, how's our cybersecurity program gonna help us with this?
Just, just a question, curiosity. Getting rid of line item numbered areas for a general paragraph type, is it give you more wiggle room, or is this?
Yeah, so, one of the, one of the purposes of this is actually introducing policy procedure and then a guideline, and the guideline can be adjusted a lot easier than going through a full policy review as technologies change. There's a lot more movement towards mobile technology and everything else. If we look at first and second readings, first and second readings to get that adjusted, we, the Senate has a, we have the Information Technology Policy and Planning Committee, which is a recognized body of planning and policy that can adjust those guidelines and then inform the rest of the community when that happens. So, it does give us a lot more flexibility.
Sure. Get it out of policy.
Any other questions? Right, that's the first reading, so we'll address that when we return in August. You've got the second agenda, the next agenda item also.
Thank you, Chairman Howard. The second policy is the, again, a full revision to our existing policy on electronic email, pretty much in the same spirit of the first one. You have a new CIO, so kind of a new authoring language, so we decided to just start with that one as well and rewrite. There are no corrections on the strikeouts on that one.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Okay, again, that's our first reading. We'll revisit that in August. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Tab Four, approve the Head Start funding, 1% cost of living allowance?
Can I say yes? We're good.
Dan Fuller.
Chairman Howard, trustees, President McLennan and guests, thank you for allowing me to come to present our Head Start cost of living adjustment. So, a little bit less than 30 days ago, the Consolidated Appropriations Act contained an increase of about 85 million for programs under the Head Start Act, and a portion of that increase was a COLA of 1%. And depending on these final funding decisions to assist grantees in increasing staff salaries, fringe benefits, and to also offset higher operating costs. So, what we are proposing is that North Idaho College Head Start be able to use their 1% along with the corresponding fringe for a total of $17,331 toward bumping the wage scale exactly 1%. And then, the remaining $6,659 would offset the increases to the fringe due to our health insurance cost increases with the college, and the total there would be $23,990 that was offered to us, should we come up with a proposal that meets all of the criteria of the Office of Head Start.
Any questions? And Beth Ann, it's my understanding that you need this approved no later than tomorrow in order to be able to accept it, as I understand things. So, we don't, we're not gonna go through a formal, you're actually requesting that this be approved tonight rather than go to a second reading?
Right, and it was a 30-day turnaround on this COLA announcement, so I apologize for that. They seem to do that quite often with our federal government, but.
It's all right. Just so the board understands that we're not gonna do this as a first and second reading, this would be something we would address tonight.
Right.
So, we have, Todd.
First off, I'm, I, I concur with going ahead and doing everything tonight with the approval. I don't know if you were gonna ask that or cared. Question for you, though, I guess our approval, don't, don't take this wrong, but it's kind of a formality, I guess, but we, you need our approval technically as the board. But the comment was just made that it's gotta be submitted in the proper format and all the rest of that stuff. Is there anything that we should be aware of, or anything, or kind of, you got it for us, right? Trust me, Card, you got it, and you're submitting it, and we're good.
Right, I think, just to have a little bit of a background on how we look at the way that we could use this funding, is we do do a very thorough wage study and a community assessment, and so, looking at that and making sure that we're not asking for above the, the market or, you know, below the market for any particular position. Should there have been that, there, if there was a, a major discrepancy, we would have asked that we use it in a different way than they suggested, to just bump the entire wage scale. But at this time, looking at those documents and, and doing a thorough analysis, it really looked like using their suggestion of bumping the wage scale would be our best use of the funds.
Using their suggestion, you meet their criteria for the submission, and we should all be good.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other comments? We need a motion then?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the grant application for the $23,990 COLA amount in order to increase the Head Start wage scale by 1% and offset health insurance cost increases.
Do we have to, in that motion, say that we're not doing a first and second motion? Doing the... doing it all at once?
No, you should, I don't think she needs to do it in the motion.
Okay.
We need a second, though.
I'll second that, sir.
Okay. All right, now, any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we need a second motion just to make sure that we waive the first reading.
Oh.
All right? And that it's effective immediately.
So, I'd move that we waive the second reading.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That take care of the issue that you brought before us tonight?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Beth Ann.
Our next tab is the one that we added, which is renaming the college bookstore. I hope the Board's had an opportunity to look at the materials that was handed out tonight, this came to us rather suddenly, but it's all going to be made crystal clear by Mr. Stanley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, President McLennan and other guests, thank you for adding this to the agenda tonight. We were a bit surprised with this as well, as it was presented to President's Cabinet yesterday. If you've had a chance to read through the request and your familiarity with what's happened to the bookstore in this last year, you know, we went through an RFP process, we selected a contractor to come in and operate our bookstore. That's the Follett Company. As a part of their contract, they provided a quarter of a million dollars to help with a refresh refurbishing of the bookstore. We had to wait, of course, until we got to the summer, and so, we've been working on those plans. There's a committee that's a cross-section of stakeholders here on campus that has been working on that, and what they ran into most recently was the idea that people don't understand that under the name of Micah Peak Exchange, that people don't know that that's the bookstore. There were several stories that were told about folks coming into the Student Union Building, seeing Micah Peak Exchange, and then going somewhere else and asking where the bookstore was because it didn't carry that name. So, there was a request made to President's Cabinet after consideration of several different names, that it be renamed to Cardinal Bookstore, carrying certainly the branding of the institution, that familiar Cardinal name, and adding in bookstore, so it's really clear about where you're going for what. That comes with the endorsement, certainly of Follett, that has extensive experience in merchandising of products and stores, so we trust in that as well. We presented out the President's Cabinet yesterday and to the President, and it met with their approval as we reviewed the policy and the procedure. You'll note that the policy says that this naming of facilities and spaces may be named at the discretion of the institution, that's the policy language. The procedure language talks about, will include an advisory vote by the Senate and input by the President, President's Cabinet and the Board of Trustees. Final approval will be made by the Board of Trustees. You would note, then, that we have approval of all those entities with the exception of Senate, and I wanted to speak to that for just a moment. As you note, the constituent groups aren't represented directly at the table, although representatives are in the audience tonight, and I had the opportunity, and with thanks to Lisa Kellerman, who's the Senate Chair for this next year, and Jeff Carr, who's the Faculty Assembly Chair, to ask them to come outside and talk to them about this and ask for their thoughts on that, if they thought Senate would have a concern with that naming taking place during the summer. I believe that, what I heard was, we thought that they would be fine with that. I let them know that the Board may, would also reconsider, as we poll Senate members, if there's a concern about that renaming, the Board would reconsider passage of that name change if necessary tonight. So, Lisa has that information and Jeff did as well, I appreciate the conversation about that. I'm suggesting, or requesting of you tonight, to then tentatively approve of that name change. We'll work closely with Lisa and the Senate and see if we can pull out a few other folks, make sure there won't be a concern about that name change. It's necessary because that work is hopefully going to begin here in the next month or two. We want to be able to have it done by early September. If we have to wait till name change at that time, then the branding and some of the refurbishing has to change as well. If we have to do that, that's okay, we'd love to have a tentative approval of that name tonight.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, sure, this is an easy one here. Not to belabor this, the bookstore, having that in there is a pretty good idea for...
Thank you.
The Micah Peak, is there anybody that you can find that has attachment to that name? In other words, was that somebody here on campus that came up with that years ago that is just going to die on that grave?
Mr. Chairman and trustee Murray, I don't believe so. The history with that goes when this building was remodeled. There's a SWAB Student Union Advisory Board that meets, and in fact, we're part of this process as well, that worked to choose those names. The names, as you would note, the Lake Corlaine Room and Crescent Bay and Powderhorn Bay were named after features of the area that we live in. So, Micah Peak was a part of that, so it wasn't attached to particularly a family or anything more sentimental other than the area we live in. So, I think we're okay to that end. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There was a question raised in some discussions about our policy also of trying to dual-name some of the facilities around here in honor of our relationship with the Corlaine Tribe. And I noticed that there is no alternative, there's no additional or second name in the Corlaine language. Is there room in the, as we move down the line here, to add the Corlaine Tribal designation that we've tried to honor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that question. We had a chance to consider that as well. Certainly, there's always room, and certainly, we would want to honor that. I've been working with a nine-point agreement committee this last year, and one of our projects is looking at the naming of facilities that haven't yet been dual-named, and then looking forward to the new facilities coming onboard, and making sure we're honoring that part of the nine-point agreement. So, there's a committee consisting of college folks and Corlaine Tribal who will be looking at all of those spaces and places, and will be coming forward to a recommendation, with a recommendation to the Board. That'll be considered at that time and could be added to this facility if the committee thought it necessary. Traditionally, those names have been reserved for building and larger spaces, not each subspace within each individual building. If that was a recommendation, we would bring that forward to you.
It came to mind only because the dining room down below has a tribal name designation to it, and the park outside, and, okay. Yes, Dot?
On that note, not to be obtuse or anything here, but in my packet, I have the Corlaine Tribe and North Idaho College nine-point agreement. So, was that a natural segue that Chairman Howard just happened to throw out there, or did you have already an ulterior line of...
I asked that that be supplied tonight because that's just part of this, the information that the Board should be aware of.
Thank you. Context, because I was wondering if Mr. Stanley had put that in there and there was something more to follow, and you just happened to feed right into it, you know, it was a nice pitch right down the middle, and see if he's going to put it over the fence.
I would like to thank Chairman Howard for suggesting that that be added to the packet tonight. It was his idea.
Okay. No, that makes sense, then. I just was kind of wondering where we were going.
So, we need a motion, then? Anybody going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move that we name it the Cardinal Bookstore.
Cardinal Bookstore.
Otherwise, voted on.
I'll second, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next tab item is Information, Integrated Strategic Planning and Visioning Update from the President.
Yeah, I gave a brief introduction earlier in my report, and I think I'll just ask Sarah Garcia to come up, and while she's coming up, I will just say that this is a process that we began in the fall, and had a dedicated group of people working on this, meeting every week at 8:00 on Tuesday, and Sarah's going to tell you about that, how we got here, a little bit, but we now have switched from developing the planning process to activating the planning process, and that's the update that we want to provide you tonight. And so, thank you, Sarah.
Quick question, the material that was handed to us tonight refers to what you're working on here?
Yes, ma'am.
And who wrote this?
I wrote it.
Thank you, just helps to know.
I shouldn't say, I drafted it and then got feedback from the committee that I'm working with.
The committee wrote it?
Yes, so, the committee wrote it. I started it, they finished it for me. I did want to point out to the trustees that there are a couple of typos in the document at the beginning, at the last paragraph, the first sentence of the last paragraph, on the front page, there's the word "which," which is stricken at the end of the sentence.
Sarah, where's that again, I'm sorry?
On the very first page, the last paragraph.
Oh, okay.
That word "which." It is meant to be stricken, I just didn't, there were some timing issues here this afternoon. I was in the rec center from 1:00 to 5:00, so... And then on the second page, the third paragraph from the bottom that begins in early November, there's a word "gathered" that was inserted, and that is also meant to be there. Just wanted to let you know, the document's somewhat in process so that you weren't confused later if you have to read it.
One last question, as you set the scene here. You said you, remind us again of who's on the committee?
So, the current committee that is creating, filling in the framework and working through this is, I'm chairing the committee, and Dr. McLennan is participating in the committee, Shannon Goodrich, Laura Rumpler, Anne Lewis from Institutional Planning, Chris Martin, Ken Wardinsky, Lita Burns, Kristy Doyle, Karen Rupel and Alex Harris.
Cassie Silva is...
And Cassie Silva, oh my gosh, I was trying to go through the subcommittees and pairing them up, so I sincerely apologize, because she's an especially important member of our team. Ask me to rattle off 10 names at the top of my head at 7:00 at night, I apologize.
That's actually pretty impressive.
Thank you. Any more questions before I begin? Okay. Chairman Howard, trustees, Dr. McLennan and guests, I'm honored to be able to be representing this group this evening, and especially honored to have been given the opportunity to lead this process forward and make something that we expect to be a very exciting and engaging process for this campus, something that's never been done in the 15 years that I've been here. As you are aware, and as Dr. McLennan mentioned, last fall, we got a group together who started talking about how are we going to do planning at this institution? How do we get planning more integrated? We have plans, but do they talk to each other? Do they make sense with each other? How do we evaluate them? What information do we use to do that? So, we had a group that got together and just really talked about the structure of what do we think would work here. So, that group worked for about six months and came up with a structure they felt, that we felt very comfortable with, and we're really excited about having built this structure. Starting in late spring, I think it was late spring this year, we started the next phase, which was putting that plan into action. And as we mentioned, I have a committee of 10-plus people. In this committee, we have five different subcommittees that, to divide and conquer on the work. And we have a subcommittee that is tasked with shepherding and managing the process related to the campus master plan. And the campus master plan is made up of the strategic plan, the academic plan, the facilities master plan, the IT master plan, and at some point in the future, an enrollment We also have a team that is working on an environmental scan, so that, kind of doing a SWAT, but from the external looking in. We have another committee that's doing an actual SWAT process for the campus itself. And we have...
What's a SWAT?
A SWAT, Strength, Weakness, Opportunities and Threats.
Thank you.
We have a communications team, because part of what we have decided with this process is critical is good communication, and so, we have a team that's dedicated just to communicating to our community, to our constituents outside of the NIC community, to the Board, and to each other, for that matter. What's happening, where we are with the process, what's coming next, and making sure that everyone feels like they're a part of it and that this isn't just happening in the background somewhere and no one's knowing what's going on. And then, the last group, which in a lot of ways is one of the more important ones from a leader of the group's standpoint, is our timeline and accountability group. So, they're taking input from all these other teams, creating a timeline, making sure we're not double-dipping on a deadline or crossing over in the time periods that we're trying to get things accomplished, as well as helping keep us on track. So, that's our committee. We've been working, like I said, for, I don't know how many months now we've been working on this. We started our process by determining that we were going to have these teams would gather up subcommittees made up of people on campus. So, depending on the subcommittee, they've had time to look at what their purpose is. I asked them to create a statement of purpose that would be a way to alert people on campus and anyone who wanted to know about the planning process, what these groups' goal was. What are we here for? What are we trying to accomplish? And that is going to become our recruiting tool, to ask people to participate in these These groups, once they are formed, once they get the subcommittees together, they're going to decide how this work is going to happen. I'm not dictating any of this, the team that I'm working with is not dictating any of this. We are facilitators, and we want authentic engagement from everybody along the way, and I will get to you and where we want you to fit in and how we're going to engage you in this process. So, the two members in our committee who are running this process, they'll be members of the committee, but they won't be chairing the committees. Their goal is to represent the overarching goal of this whole strategic planning process and to ensure that that team is staying on track, and also to report back to the centralized group of what's happening in those subgroups and making sure that we're on track and know what's going on. Concurrently, we're working on the colleges, working on the vision statement for the college. During the first phase of this project, one of the key elements that this team felt, that the planning, structure team felt was critical, was that we have a good, strong, relevant mission statement, and that that was going to be key to building and executing on a planning framework. So, and in this vision, in our mind, the two words that we keep talking about with the vision is we want it to be aspirational and inspirational. So, we are going to be working with a consultant to help us through that process, and that consultant will lead us through the effort in the visioning process. So, as you can see at, towards kind of the bottom third of your page, the short-term deliverables of this Integrated Planning Committee are to have a vision statement. We plan to do that work during convocation, to start that work during the convocation process at the beginning of the school year, to make sure we're engaging all the faculty as well as the staff and the students. And that we will, our current goal is to present that to you as a first reading in December of this year. The environmental scan will be going on, it's actually, they're working on getting the plans going, so as we get the committee set up, we'll actually start doing that work. We anticipate to be able to gather that information and prepare a report back to you and to the community by the end of January of 2018. The same thing with the SWAT analysis, that we'll be following the similar tracks, so that we will be preparing that information and presenting it and sharing it in January. As soon as we get that information and our vision statement together, and while we are working on all that, we'll be working on the academic master plan and the facilities master plan. So, we, I should back up just a little bit, we're not starting from scratch with any of this stuff. This process that we're working on is we're looking at what we have now, where we are now, what our current strategic plan is, and just tuning it up to make sure that we're still on the right track and we're following, you know, do we have something that's a little bit off in our strategic plan or our academic master plan? Do we need to tweak that and make sure they're all in alignment and to work through that? So, the academic master plan, the facilities master plan, ideally by this time next year, that we would have those completed and ready to share with you, and that we would be shooting for, to re-adopt the current strategic plan with these updates at the end of the spring of next year. Once we get that confirmed, then we'll start working on the goals and objectives that need to be tweaked in relation to that strategic plan. Okay? Ambitious. Once we do get the goals and objectives complete, the structure calls for an annual revision or annual monitoring of the data and reporting on the progress that, to the Board and to the community, the college community, the external community, and that we're using that information to start preparing us for the next phase, which would occur in 2020, which is our next accretive, the beginning of our next tenure... which is our next accreditation, the beginning of our next 10-year accreditation cycle. So, we would start this process kind of from scratch and really look at everything again from start to finish and in, in basically the same order we're looking at it now, assuming this all works the way we want it to. If we find we made a mistake somewhere, we'll adjust it and, and move forward at that point. So, here's the part, where do you fit in?
Uh-oh.
So, we want to engage the board of trustees in, in multiple ways and obviously multiple levels throughout this process. We're going to ask you to participate in this campus-wide visioning process at, at the convocation period and we'll give you as much notice as we possibly can to hopefully arrange your schedule so you can be a part of that. We would like your assistance providing input as we develop the missions, the vision statement. And as we refine the information we get from that visioning process, we anticipate kind of having a draft before the first reading where we can share with you and with the campus what we've gathered from that process and get some feedback on it and maybe adjust it a little bit before we actually make it as a presentation as a first reading. We, we, the Integrated Planning Committee, would also like to hold a SWOT session with the board, so a Strength, Weakness, Opportunity, and Threat session with the board and the presidents cabinet together to potentially in a workshop type of situation where we can give you the same opportunity that we're giving everyone else on campus and listen to what you think is, what are our strengths and our weaknesses. Again, we're looking for this in early September, hopefully sometime in September, we'll have to see what your schedules are like, so that we can combine it with the other campus input and get the SWOT, the complete SWOT analysis prepared in time for this, this January timeframe. Let's see. So, I, again, I think in early November, even though we said we're going to present final reports on the environmental scan and, and I'm kind of reading through you all on the document, I'm keeping pretty close to it. In November, we hope to share with you some of our preliminary results from the SWOT activities and, and the environmental scans that we're doing, just to kind of keep you in the loop and not just give you this big old report and have you try to absorb it all at once, but to kind of share with you as we learn, to share with you what we're learning. And then, in December, again, like I said before, we would be sharing with you the first reading of the vision statement as well as kind of everything that we've got to that point in support of this effort. So, it's not very obvious because I'm a little nervous, but this is really, really exciting. I get a big smile on my face whenever I talk about this. This, we're undertaking a task at this institution that we've never done before. And we're, we're making it a Herculean task, but I think we're going to have Herculean results. And we're really excited and this team is really dedicated to, this isn't going to be the same 10 people on these committees that we always have on every committee. It's not going to be, oh yeah, well, my input came in, but no one listened. We are really committed to making this a genuine campus-wide conversation. And it's a lot of work, but it's really exciting work. So, I, as I said before, I'm excited. Our goal really is to get genuine, honest, and inclusive feedback. And we're, I, like I said, I've worked here 15 years, this is amazing campus and we have amazing people here. And I think if we get all our arrows pointed in the same direction, there's no stopping us. So, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions or comments? Judy?
Just wow. Ah, and good luck.
Thank you.
Everable.
Good stuff.
Did you have something?
It's just good stuff. This is, it's exciting to think about and, you know, you, you go through a life of a career hoping to make a mark and this could create a legacy if you can impact the kids and the, all the academics around here and have it seen, all in one nice package. The thing is, the thicker the package, the less likely people are to get it off the shelf. Something that's usable and you look at it every year and you, you check your results, you have accountability to it. It's how you move forward.
That's the plan. The plan is, once we get this big old plan, is how do we boil it down into one really simple communication piece that everyone knows, understands, and lives by?
Absolutely.
Yes, Judy?
Just follow up and to thank you to all the, that's why I wanted to keep track of the committee members here, that right now, you're upright and standing. We'll see now when we're in the fall, how you're doing, but to all the committee, thank you.
As I listen to you, I'm impressed with the undertaking, but I also believe that education is undergoing a paradigm, massive paradigm shift right now, all the way from K-12 up through, not just the community colleges, but the four years and what the public expects and what we need in this country out of education. And so, as you're looking down the road, you're looking down at not just something that's historical, you're looking, you're having to look into the future. And I'll be really interested to what you find.
We are too.
Good.
We are too. We are definitely looking to the future and one, just, if you'll allow me just a moment, one of the conversations we had in, when we were building the structure was, my son is 15. He's going to be a freshman in high school this year. Five years from now, he's going to be a college freshman. What does, how does he learn? Where does he get his information? What is he interested in? What does he consider as career opportunities? We all have relationships with people. That's, we shouldn't be looking at who we're not serving or who we didn't serve two years ago. We need to be looking at who we're going to be serving in the future. And there's a lot of discussion and momentum in this group about thinking forward. So, I, I appreciate that comment.
Good. Judy?
Couple of things to segue into that I was going to do during, go the order, but the IB, Idaho Business for Education, has continued to champion the needs. And one of the statistics that came out in their Future of Work Report was, a study issued this spring by Price Waterhouse Cooper says that nearly 40% of the jobs in the United States could be at risk of automation by 2030, 17 years away. A higher percentage than in Germany, Japan, or the United Kingdom. A previous study by Oxford University picked the number at 46%. So, 40, you know, almost half the jobs are at risk at least, which is part of what we're trying to figure out as a board, how to prepare. The other one was, a Future of Work Study said that up to 80, 87% of the jobs that pay $20 per hour or less could be automated over the next 15 to 20 years. So, when you look at the employment opportunities, they're just massive change and that's good that you're trying to figure out how we stay ahead of that.
I, I believe I've read a statistic that says something like 25% of students today, the jobs they will be doing when they grow up have not been invented yet.
Word.
Yep.
Well, good luck on your mission.
Thank you.
And we are looking forward to hearing from you.
But you will hear from us. Thank you.
The next agenda item is the Board Chair Report. So, we had the great fortune, since the State Board of Education was up here and everybody, the other community colleges sent personnel up here, we actually had a meeting of the Idaho Community College Consortium here in Coeur d'Alene. Normally, we have to go down to Boise, so we had an opportunity to have everybody up here. Brad Murray attended the meeting with me.
Thanks, Brad.
We had a report from the participants and as you recall, this is the, these are the presidents and the chairs of the community colleges, as well as the, the new community college, College of Eastern Idaho, that is now being formulated. The report on the Higher Education Committee, from my perspective, quite frankly, it, it was not really encouraging. I get the distinct impression that, that maybe it's the State Board of Education, maybe some other forces have really got a plan of what they want to see happen and it's moving forward in that direction. And will we see any innovation out of it? Will we see any, any good progress in terms of making positive changes apart from the initial plan? I don't know. We'll have to wait and see. Also, at the, the meeting, we discussed the difficulty that community colleges have with, with the legislators. We have probably on the order of 25% of the legislative community turns over every two years. And so, we have people coming into both the House and the Senate that really have, many of them have very little understanding of community colleges and what community colleges do, how they differ from four years, what, what their, what their, their role is in the community, as well as not just education, but also workforce training and the wide array of undertakings that community colleges have. So, we agreed to try to put together a, a white paper, something on the order of four or five pages, fairly short, that we can distribute to new legislators every year as they come in, to try and help them understand as they get through the process, not just of making changes to the legislation, but also to dealing with budgeting, about the role of community colleges and how we differ and what values we add to our communities that is different than the, the other educational institutions. So, hopefully, within the next year, we'll have that white paper put together and something that we can use, not just with legislators, but other people who really don't understand what the value of community colleges and what they bring to the different communities around the state. With the new community college down in Idaho Falls now, we have the, the great fortune of having four community colleges situated geographically around the state. So, the influence of community colleges is, is going to grow and we've just got to make sure that people understand our, the value that we bring to, to the communities and to the state. In, in that regard, by the way, about the, the College of Eastern Idaho, we agreed that we would, the trustees from the three existing community colleges would formulate a committee to go down and help them in their first board meeting or the second board meeting, orient them and, and discuss with them some of the issues that we've run into, relationships between trustees and administration, help them understand what, what's in front of them, kind of an indoctrination session, but also just from, on a conversational level. So, we expect to spend the day down there going through with them, questions they may have and suggestions that we may be able to offer them. Yeah, we're going to be putting together an agenda and some material to provide to them so that, to help them along their way to get oriented in this, this new endeavor of being a trustee for a community college. And that meeting will be August 11th down in Idaho Falls. Along the way, I, I think I've reported you earlier about an effort to put together a program that I like to call "Education in Lieu of Incarceration." And just to sort of report on the progress of that, I had an opportunity to make a presentation to the governor's Criminal Justice Commission. And it's a group of about 30 representatives from various walks of the criminal justice system. They had courts, they had prison officials, they had representatives from the Sheriff's Association, the chiefs of police, legislators, citizen members. So, the committee was made up of about 35, 34 people. And I made a presentation to them about the community colleges being able to help with, hopefully, reducing the prison population by putting together a program to try and reduce recidivism. We know from some studies that have been done that recidivism or repeat offenders could be reduced by as much as 34% with education. And what we're proposing now, though, is to catch these people before they actually go to prison. So, they're rather, it's an alternative sentencing. And it would involve a lot of intricacies, but they have to pay back and, but it would involve community colleges creating a curriculum that is standard in many ways to teach them skills and abilities to carry out and get an employment, but would also teach character building and citizen building skills and abilities. And it's going to challenge, I think, community colleges to put together a program for a kind of a select group of individuals. But if we can do it and do it right, we can save the state several million dollars a year, just by educating about 60 people who've been arrested for nonviolent crimes usually, is what we're looking at, maybe first-time drug offenders, maybe other, maybe nonviolent crimes, robbery, burglary, that doesn't involve violence. But parole and probation is part of this. Anyway, I presented that to this group and I'm pleased to tell you that they, there was a unanimous, there was a motion to create a subcommittee by them to study this with us and put it together, and it was unanimously adopted by this group. So, we're now on, on a path of trying to develop a program. Education will be involved in it, along with representatives from these various interest areas. It's being chaired by the Administrative Director of the Idaho Supreme Court. And so, I hope I'll be able to report progress from time to time of us moving forward, of trying to develop what I think would be a program that is, we don't, we, we don't see around the United States. There, there are educational programs clearly in, in institutions, correctional institutions. But the, this project is to head people off before they get into the damaging environment and atmosphere of a prison, to try and get them redirected, to get them skills and abilities and the kind of confidence to go out and make good citizens themselves. So, I'm kind of looking forward to seeing if we can move that along, but it's going to take some time and it's going to take an awful lot of effort. And my last item, yes?
Just to interrupt to say, thank you for leading it. We've talked about it over the years, but you went and helped make it happen. And the, you know, the logic is so clear, why is it taking so long and yet, at least we're getting started now? And the money you talked about saving, I have some ideas where we could spend it.
I, I want to get, I want to take it from the criminal justice system.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I mean, there is education taking place inside the prisons.
Oh, to, yeah, right.
But I'm serious, I mean, formal education, they-
Good as well as bad, right.
-they give them certificates and stuff like that. The problem is that they come out being educated and being a criminal as well as-
Yep, yep.
... correctiveness, so, yeah.
Thank you.
The last item that I want to report on is, we've talked before about this strip of BLM property between River and Hubbard that NIC is interested in having as part of our campus. And there's been a long-term process of the BLM leasing the property. We were told in the beginning by the BLM that they didn't, BLM did not want to deal with us as a separate entity, they wanted to deal with one entity and that would be the city, and that we should then deal with the city. And we have done that. Unfortunately, somewhere along the way, the message got confused and another BLM is suggesting that we really can't have a sublease or any separate specific agreement to that land with the city. We may be able to amend the lease that should be signed sometime before September, October this year, but it'll be a couple of years down the line. And so, we still have to work out an arrangement where we can try and secure, long-term, the interest of NIC to that strip of land between Hubbard and, and River that was the old BLM property. The lease is one avenue that we're just going to have to sit and watch right now. Another avenue is to approach the federal government and have one of our senators or representatives petition for a transfer of that land in fee simple, which means complete ownership, to NIC or to the city and then get the city to deed over to us, that section that we're interested in. And that's still on, on the horizon. But I wanted to report to you that unfortunately, I thought we were, through the planning process and everything, we were in place to- and everything, we were in place to just be able to treat that property as our own. BLM doesn't quite see it that way. That's the end of my report. So the last item is remarks for good of the order. Any remarks for the good of the order?
Yeah, I would like to recognize, I saw it in the paper, Russell Grove, NIC golf coach, went in the Oregon Open. That's quite an accomplishment.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I may, I want to bring to your attention, again, if you hadn't noticed, the bearded young man in the back of the room, our former student body president, Sean Collins, who has promised he'll attend every Board of Trustees meeting until he completes his bachelor's degree and you hire him here. Secondly, sitting next to him is potentially the newest employee of the college, and I'm pleased to introduce her to you. She just graduated from Johns Hopkins University. She's coming to us from Springfield, Virginia. She's one of our new Student Success Advisors. Her name is Adriana Del Gizi, and she's standing up, and I would love to introduce her to you.
Welcome.
All right. Yes.
I think it's time to celebrate the fact that we won't be meeting in July, is that correct? That everybody have a good summer and that by the time we gather in August, I hate to tell you all, but you'll be back in the traces by then. So good summer to everybody.
Great. Thank you. With that, we stand adjourned.